Oh, wait a minute. I have six right now. Good evening.
Good evening.
It's being six o'clock. I will call this meeting of the Enfield Board of Selectmen on October 3rd, 2022 to order. We're skipping the presentation tonight. And we will have first the approval of the minutes of September 19, 2022. I read them online. Lots of them. Thank you for that.
Yeah, that was a lot.
Yeah, that was good. They look good to me.
Yep, I'll make an emotion refer.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have board reports. I will have a budget committee meeting tomorrow night. I'll report on that at our next select board meeting.
I said I was unable to attend the Eric's meeting last week. Do a contact, so I don't have any work this week.
I was able to hit up the planning board meeting. It was a pretty interesting meeting largely taken over by conceptual. So I'll hold up the little picture so you guys can see. This has been a topic of conversation in town before, but it's come back in a different form. So this is what at one point was known as Ironman, the Ironman property that comes Maple over onto Route 4.
Oh, my goodness, that's bad.
Well, it's different. So and that's why I decided, you know, you guys know my great love of paper. No kidding. I rarely keep anything, but so I brought this because I wanted you to see they've kind of chosen a different footprint and a different approach. So really nice organized presentation. I like organized presentations. So this is what they came back. It's 154 proposed units, their apartment buildings, either one or two bedrooms. So and they came and just did a conceptual and talked about information they need from the town to make their assessment of whether it's, you know, a good value for them to perceive things that obviously we will need from them. So it's, it's a pretty neat underground parking. The footprint is different than last time. You kind of see every level has some difference. So figured I'd show you guys because it's hard to see it without. There's a western elevation and they really, they took into account a lot of the things they learned. But this is the old, I mean, really designed. And so it lays in a different kind of space and you can see the parking situation and travel was very different. So just throwing out there, I'll let, let you guys do.
I do recall in the, those discussions, there was a lot of controversy over the driveway down to Route 4 being steep and with a sudden stop at the end. Did that come up in any fashion?
Yep, and they're gonna have to work with that and planning with the state. And so, and they know that one of the things that got taken out, because before they were more, I guess, of a, the townhouse condominium. So some of the amenities that they were kind of trying to cram into the hillside around the water tower were taken out. They also consolidated the buildings and the footprints on a smaller, so you have more contiguous land. So they definitely have listened. We'll see how they do going forward. I know that they, they have a lot to do before this even becomes a thing that we have to vote on. So I think they were gonna come back for a second conceptual, it sounded like, and here, so yeah. So just something that we kind of have on our radar and something that may or may not happen, we'll find out. So that was kind of the body. And then we talked about all of the, we'll call it the laundry list of wishes that as you're talking and talk about improvements in town and things you find in the zoning that maybe don't do, didn't do exactly what you hoped they would do. And there's always things that you can improve upon. So starting to make that list of what we should be going to town meeting with. So that was the body of our meeting. I'll let you and Eric look at that after this afternoon.
Any further news on the Bog Road property?
I, we heard nothing around me.
I talked to his sister today. She, she said that he has now hired an engineering firm, which we're very happy to hear. I believe he's also hired an attorney. He had resisted both of those, but I think he learned that he realizes he's gonna need some professional assistance through that whole process, so.
Yeah, and I don't know if we explained it last time, but it is a, oh, the project, we deem the project, and I'm gonna have the wrong words.
Regional impact.
Yeah, a, a project of regional impact. And at the same time, we talked about this project probably being a project of regional impact when it comes around.
And possibly very positive.
Right, yeah, I think we'd have to, you know, we need to include our neighbors like Lebanon and Canaan and just have those upfront conversations so that people know what the expectations and impacts possibly are. And it's, it's much more transparent to do that upfront. So definitely everyone's acting in good faith, in my opinion, on this one. And then obviously, Mr. Conkey will get some professional help, which it sounds like he needs.
Any other thing from board reports? Town managers report.
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to start out by thanking the Old Bone Days Committee for their hard work organizing and planning the successful event that we had on September, the weekend of September 24th. I'd also like to thank all the individuals and businesses who volunteered their time, participated, gave towards those events. The support that was given by all allows events like that to be successful. It was a nice weekend. My wife and I were able to attend many of the events and talk to many people. And it was just a, it was a good time to be had by all. There were lots of smiles going around and it was nice to see the sense of community throughout the, the weekend. So thank you for everybody that helped participate in that event. I have been contacted, we, we're still kind of ongoing through the Fairpoint Communications Abatement request for their tax appeal. We had a, it was in court for a long time. They are with many towns across the state. I have been contacted by Eric Mayer, who was the attorney from Donahue, Tucker and Candel, I think. He's reached out notifying that Fairpoint will again be appealing their tax assessment. He asked if we were gonna use him and if we were to allow him to just, to be serve the paperwork on that. So I plan on doing that, but I wanted to, to come to the select board first to make sure that they were okay moving forward with that.
I thought for some reason we had gone through and anticipated that they were, we didn't take care of this upfront.
It was a settlement at the time for the tax years that were being appealed, but they're gonna continue appealing.
Okay, I mean, I think I, we had that discussion. For some reason, I thought there was like an additional add-on and maybe we took care of the add-on piece, but.
Yeah, we haven't taken care of any future years. We just proved up to where we were, really.
Okay.
So I do plan on working with him. He's representing many different towns in this and I think it's in Enfield's best behalf to be a part of that group as well. Audit review, as we talked a little bit before the meeting, we have scheduled Tim Green to speak at the Budget Committee meeting tomorrow, October 4th at 6:30 PM right here in the DPW meeting room. They'll discuss the 2021 audit. Following the audit discussion, there'll be a 2022 budget review and discussion about goals for the 2023 budget year. We'll be working on that tomorrow night if anybody would like to attend. Update the select board. I've been working with First Light Fiber, the provider who took over the fast roads infrastructure and has internet infrastructure upstairs. We're working on a lease for that space in our DPW building. We're really close to some sort of an agreement that I will bring forward to the select board once completed. We're looking at a multi-year lease. At this point, we're finalizing a monthly payment for First Light and then also agreeing to submeter the power to let them pay their fair share of the power bill, which neither of which have been paid since the fast roads project went in. So that's something we've been working on and I think we're really close to an agreement. We've been passing one back and forth, but once we, once we get to an agreement, I'll bring that back since a multi-year agreement for this left board to look through. I am happy to announce, we talked about this at the last meeting, but work on the community building roof should begin Tuesday or Wednesday of this week. So we're, we're moving forward with that. The community building will remain usable during the project. They'll keep it open. We did decide to go with 50-year asphalt shingles. I know there was some talk about metal ripping, but after talking with our building inspector and we contacted Paul Nursey, who architected the building, they both recommended not using metal roofs because it would cause damage to some of the stuff we have around the building and it would also cause some dangerous situation, right? The snow loads being dropped. So we've ordered the roofing material and it should be being placed soon. Good to see that getting done. And then after that, I just wanted to talk a little bit about upcoming events. We have our Halloween events coming up. This, the town's primary Halloween event this year will be held on Saturday, October 29th from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. We'll be having a trunk or treat at Hughes Park with some games, like a little fair-type game area and then a family-friendly haunted house. This event will be followed at 6:30 by the movie Hocus Pocus put on by the Police Association in the community building. If you'd like to participate in the trunk or treat or make a candy donation, contact Kevin Marker. He's here tonight, you wanna talk to him, but he's, you can also contact him at his email. It's recreation@enfield.nh.us. And then during the event, we'll be collecting non-perishable food items for the Friends of Massoma. So it's a good event to bring that to. You don't have to, but we're asking for donations if you come. I also wanted to let everybody know that trick-or-treating times on Halloween night, we're proposing a five to eight trick-or-treating time where the town will be not sponsoring any events, but we'll have police out during those times to help make sure there's safe crossings at the downtown village area. So if you'd like to participate in that, please turn your porch light on and welcome trick-or-treaters to come. And like I said, the police will be out there from five to eight. So that's when we would, we would ask people to go, but you can trick-or-treat whenever you would like to. That's all I have for a town manager's report unless anybody has any questions.
Questions? No questions. We have no communications at this time. So the business of the evening, first item is to introduce a proposed short-term rental ordinance.
So I can start with this. As I put in your packets, this is really just to start conversation if this is something that the town would even like, like to look at. Instead of coming to you and saying, we want to talk about this, we thought it would be good to, to put an ordinance together. This ordinance was actually primarily put together before Ryan left. Rob had helped him put this together. Me and Rob passed it back and forth, made a few, few changes to it and wanted to, to bring it forward for discussion, to see if it's something that we wanted to do. As I also stated in your packet, we have not had a lot of issues here in town. We've had a few, but looking at what's happening across the state, across the country, there's been a lot of towns and cities that have had major, major problems from short-term rentals. And we just didn't want to be having this conversation after the problem started. We wanted to be a little proactive, have some discussions and see if this is something we would want to do or not.
Yeah, I, I think this is very timely. You know, I've spoken quite a bit with people in other communities, particularly communities that are close to recreational possibilities. And it, it's very easy for things to get out of hand and overcrowded and disruptive. And also it has an impact upon the, the housing stock. There are fewer places for people to buy and/or rent who are coming in seeking employment. I know there are areas in Colorado, particularly those, those big ski areas, right? Where it's gone crazy and people have to drive an hour, an hour and a half to find a place to live.
Yeah, I'd also like to point out, sort of reading this whole proposed ordinance, our major aspect looking at this was kind of a health and safety aspect and then character of the neighborhood. We kind of took it in two chunks. We have heard those issues across the state. One of them happened to one of our employees here in town where they had a short-term rental and it got congregated upon by many more people than were supposed to be there and they had a septic system failure. We have many of those short-term rentals around the lake. So having some way to, I don't know if you'd say regulate, but at least know how many people should or should not be in a short-term rental, we think is important. And then, as you all know, the parking issues and things that can come along with some of those. So that's really how this was written and it's written in a way where it's just a registry. So there's, we know what's going on and we can work with the, with the property owners to put something in place with the right amount of people, the right amount of parking places that that property can handle, it's permitted.
I would also point out to Lower Shaker Village, which is sort of prime rental spot on the lake. They sort of self-regulated as a homeowners association themselves, limited short terms. So no rentals under 30 days. And it was largely because of people coming in on a short-term basis, not knowing what to do, knocking on the doors. Where do I put my trash? Now, where can I park? Those kind of things.
Put this up on the screen, was that a possibility? Just because I, I think some of the questions will probably be answered by people seeing this because I, when I, you know, you never know what you're gonna read going into it. I certainly had asked Ed about, you know, just taking a look at this because I want to protect all, property owners of all kinds, right? You know, folks who say here who don't do the rentals and folks who want to have a rental and then provide a tool so that we, as a community, have a way to give people better guidance. And I see this as an approach, as a, a tool instead of being punitive. I do have some questions on it, but I think.
Yeah, we can, he can go to his office and get it if we want to go in that detail tonight.
Yeah, I mean.
Have the discussion. If we're gonna move it forward, it needs to go to the planning board. It needs to go through a full review. It's gonna end up having to be a town meeting.
Yeah.
Ordinance. I just wanted to have the discussion of, do we want to even look at this or do we not?
I, I have some questions outlined, if it's, if you guys want to, it's up to you.
Well, my, my questions were not so much about the details, but around, you know, where, where the planning board falls in the process, where public hearings and those sorts of activities fall in the process. And then also just, like, I don't have an understanding of, say, what like bed and breakfasts or our small ins have for regulations. And part of, part of it to me would be making it sort of fair for everybody. So making, making either more hard or easier, less hard. You know, I'd want to make sure people are on sort of a level playing field for providing very similar services. I mean, I'm generally hesitant to add fees to allow people to use their properties. But that would be part of the public discussion and, you know, in the detail that we don't necessarily need to discuss tonight.
Yeah, no, that fee was put in the.
Yeah, no, I. And that kind of thing should be in there to.
And that was my question.
Engage discussion.
I mean, in all honesty, $50 for what is outlined here seems very, very low and that means the rest of the taxpayers are subsidizing.
It's also one of those things, we don't want it to be.
Punitive.
Even close to.
So I guess my question is, what would, what is, I think it sounds like the answer is yes, we're probably at a point where it's worth moving forward, you know, putting more effort into it. What is the process to take something like this from, you know, an initial draft to a final engine?
I would say right now, I would say we present it to the planning board. At their next meeting, they're starting to talk about zoning changes and those types of things. I don't know if this is one that would be ready for this year's town meeting. It's an awful lot of work, I think, to get ready for that. But that's definitely where the discussion, I think, should, should start and live until we, until we come back forward as a.
If you, if you read the, our zoning ordinance, it's sort of the preamble at the very beginning. Why do we have a, our zoning ordinance? And it sort of falls right in with what the sort of goal is here is to promote the health and safety of the people of town and property values and things that we're talking about certainly fall into. And so we talked about it last week that it should probably fall into maybe a chapter of the zoning ordinance.
Yes, that's, yeah. Certainly a lot of towns like, right, Hanover nearby has, within their zoning, they have various rules and regulations around short-term rentals. You know, so that's another model beyond, you know, that can be followed beyond just an ordinance.
And I think certainly from a, from a trend, you know, it's one thing, somebody has, you know, a little cabin behind their place or something like that. That's one thing, but we're starting to see actual, you know, hedge fund money going out and buying up properties, you know, sight unseen, not even from the area and having basically, it's just rental property. There's not even anybody that lives in this time zone that owns it, that kind of thing. And so I think you're being proactive is probably a good thing, at least to look at it. I mean, if the town decides it's not a good idea, that's, that's, that's their prerogative too, so.
I think a lot of this promotes good neighborly practices too, right? Like, how often does somebody just not know where to park? I mean, it's a real thing. You, if anybody, I've rented the Airbnbs, you get there and you're like, they said two parking spaces. I can see it's two units, this is a hot mess, which one's mine? So, you know, it's honestly, it's something that helps make, helps people make better decisions. Or especially during snow removal times, we're in prime skiing area. It's very hard to tell where to park, like, are you blocking the plow? Are you blocking your neighbor's yard from getting, people who are renting, they just, they don't know. Not their fault. So I, I'd like it to be, I guess for me, I see a lot of value in making a useful tool. I'm, I'm concerned about, you know, a few things like time. I would rather see it approved on a rolling basis than have it hit all around the holidays, just based. And you guys can tell me what you want to do in the office. You know, it, maybe it's great at the holidays because it's not budget season, but some of those kind of things, I think, can be flushed out.
Yeah, we can talk about that. I think having a time when they're due is much better than trying to deal with it on a monthly basis from an admin standpoint. It's a lot easier to say, okay, it's this time, we need to address.
And I, I just, I fear, whatever I see at beginning of year, end of year, my brain goes, oh, what else? What other activities should we be doing at that time? You know, it's an interesting time of the year for us because we basically go without a budget for three months.
Well, this is also in the building inspector's realm, which that's his slowest time of year.
And, and I guess the other thing is, why is it in the building inspector versus the fire if it's a, you know, is it? I don't think everyone's gonna feel comfortable.
His inspections too.
He does, okay. You know, I think that everyone wants to know that.
To be there. He does all the septic work and so he, he knows all the ins and outs of all this. It's easy. We also wrote in there, you know, or his design name, we can talk about that as we go through. But if it's a busy time, we may be able to get one or two other people that can, that can help get some of these done. But I don't think it's gonna be a huge workload after the first year or so. It's just getting, getting it started and through it if we decide to move in that direction.
Yeah, I noticed that the approving agent is us. The select board, I'm not a big fan of it being asked. I'd rather delegate it and then have a, be the body that the appeal would be made to. That's just my personal opinion. It seems like this is an operations choice and so delegating it to the appropriate department for approval would be, I, I think, more fair. But I don't know how you guys feel.
I think it falls within the land use boards. I think the planning board would be the more appropriate.
Yeah, I don't know.
Place for appeals to go to because it would fall under, you know, how are people using their property in a land use standpoint, you know?
I just don't see us, like, signing off on it, I don't know, individually, like.
Yeah.
I mean, we could, we could just take the whole slate, but I think that gets into so-and-so said so-and-so, blah, blah, blah. And then do we really need to be adjudicating that in the middle of a select board meeting when it really would, should flow through the office?
When we originally started out, it was gonna be something like, well, you guys were the mask ordinance where you guys, it was actually, came out of this like board. But further discussions that he and I had, it definitely seems like more appropriate under land use. Yeah, so maybe land use inspection, zoning compliance, that kind of stuff.
And then the other question I have, just in terms of sometimes when you get an ordinance that's this long, people don't read it, but they might be inclined to, if you had to pull out like an addendum where the expectation is you post that you are compliant with X, Y, and Z. So if it's, you know, I know, I noticed there's a no off-leash dog, that's not correct. We don't have a leash law in Enfield, we have a leisure voice command. So making sure that we give reference to the proper regulations and then also just maybe, I'm a big fan of visual tools that are simple to read and that are bulleted so that you can reference that document without being like, here, guys, I know you're not gonna read this. Like, we will, but honestly, like, most renters are gonna be like, yep. And then they're gonna be like, what do you know, fireworks? And since that's a favorite topic around here. But, or hey, I couldn't have a camper and another 30 people and a horse and a llama show, right? Because that happens sometimes. Do we want to send it to planning board?
So we can do.
I'm sorry, the planning board.
I can also post a draft of it online so people can see.
I think that's a very good idea.
Yeah, because I think, you know, feedback would be great because we want to hear from people who own properties and have that stuff of all kinds.
Okay. I'll get it to you, but we had, I did have one person that opposed it and I will pass that on to the planning board as well. Others haven't.
They oppose it in draft form or?
Yes, and just the concept in general of regulating short-term rentals. I'll make sure you guys get a copy of that as well, but I, I couldn't do it in the office.
Yeah, we're good to move on?
Oh.
Okay, a discussion about the creation of a committee for the Johnson Beach property. The Johnston Drive Property Committee.
So I had kind of my thoughts on what you might, what we might do for a committee just based off what we've done in the past. I'm thinking two ex officio, right? So lucky Ed, and then I'll pick on Kevin. Because of the recreation, right? And so putting two ex officio and then five members of the public to be, so taking applications like we've done in the past.
We should definitely take out the pages that we have in the past. I, I think there's also a couple of other groups, I mean, that have sort of either experienced the master planning group. I think we should invite someone from that group because they've already collected a great deal of information that ties directly into that. The Recreation Director slash, the Recreation Commission would be another group that we already have in town. And then also, I, I think the Conservation Commission should be included in some form or fashion right from the start. And then some number of general public as well. But those are sort of the three established groups that we have that already have a great deal of experience with either the recreational aspects, the discussions that have already happened in town, the master planning and then, you know, experience dealing with the various lakes and rivers and watersheds and everything, which obviously impacted, that was.
I mean, I think we could take input from conservation, but basically, like, they could just be like, put it in conservation. If you put in conservation with no rules, people can just trot down and do whatever they want, essentially. Right? Like, it doesn't protect it in a different way, so I'm not sure conservation would have, other than saying we should, you know, keep people from driving into the lake maybe, and I think those would be valid. But I, I would give the committee, you know how like when we did the building committees, we charged them with certain questions? I guess I'd like to see us charge them with interviewing the abutters and talking to conservation and having that be part of the task that we're caused rather than, because I, I get this feeling that we're gonna end up with a large number of applications and everyone's gonna feel like they're not represented unless we kind of task them in a, a different way.
Well, we'll definitely have to put together the scope of work and define what it is that the committee's gonna do. I mean, I had, I feel like, I guess I've already said my piece, I've been, I risked repeating myself. I feel like we already have groups that work on these things and pulling in that expertise makes sense.
I think there is a, sometimes a limit to how large a committee should be.
Yeah.
And my thought is usually seven is a good maximum number. Beyond that, it can get sort of unwieldy and a little disorganized at times.
That's how I came to seven.
There you go.
Out of habit and, and then giving them the two folks from the town office as part of their seven so that they have the tools that they're responsible to line up whoever they would need to be talking to and to make sure all of those parties get heard.
Other thoughts on this?
I think we need to do it. I've had some very interesting conversations with folks who didn't necessarily feel like they wanted to have their good name and life dragged through the mud over this. There's a lot of interest in town in learning and figuring out what should and needs to be done. And I think it should include more people than just the people who show up in meetings if they feel more comfortable applying and then want to be on a group. But I think some people aren't ready to put themselves out there just for the sake of maybe getting skewered later because it's a little bit, a little bit tough for some people. You know, I had some interesting questions that I didn't, I heard one today that I didn't know about. Apparently there's been an issue of partying down there and I was like, I don't think we've gotten any complaints about that. I mean, we know that up on the point, which is much further away and in the water, there's been an issue, but, you know, I think.
As far as I know, we got.
Yeah, that's, I, I was very surprised. So I learned something new every day. But to me, we need to address it because I feel like it's public property now that so many people know about it. We should be at least, you know, sending the police to take a quick lap and saying the expectation is that it's closed at sundown, like our other. And saying the expectation is that it's closed at sundown, like our other parks perhaps, or whatever recreation has set for the other parks. I think summer sundown, some have times, but just setting some basic minimum standards so that in the interim, people, you know, are respectful. And know what they should be doing.
We should have signage made up sooner rather than later.
That's what I asked for last time. And and if it has to be changed, so be it. But I think just setting the expectation that, you know, you're respectful of neighbors and that you don't trash the places, a minimum.
So how do, how do we want to go about establishing this committee? Should we post something on the listserv?
I can post something. What I was hoping from tonight was kind of where you guys were headed. What do we? Is there going to be some parameters around what the makeup's going to be? I'll need to know that to post it. And then if we can talk about. I guess the charge a little bit. I mean, we can continue to work on. Detailed information you guys want, if we want to talk about that the next couple of meetings, but I think we need. Some sort of charge of what this committee's going to do before we say, hey, do you want to be on this committee?
I think they need to do a basic determination of keep versus sell, right? That's our base line because if we, we don't need to have any more conversation with. You know, I think most of us are the, and the people we heard here thinking keep. I've heard from more than one person who says sell, so there are the sell. Um, I won't pick on anyone in the audience. Um, so I think we need them to do an analysis of keeping it versus selling it. That'd be my first charge.
But I guess the first question is, do you want to limit the scope to just Johnston Drive or do you want to expand to any other parks in town?
Or?
Well, so right, the original proposal, what it also involved the Shakoma Beach. I'm perfectly happy to decouple those at this point and say we're only focused on Johnston Drive. But that's, that's sort of the first question. Is it just Johnson Drive or is it coupled with other parks that we have in town? I'm probably going to decouple and say it's Johnson Drive. And yeah, it's, you know, should we keep it? Should we sell it? If if the decision is to keep it. What are some basic recommendations for what the town, you know, surveying people in town? Leveraging the surveys that have already been done through the master planning effort. And making a basic recommendation. But I think we should also provide a timeframe. I mean, I think, I think a group could go through that basic analysis in about six months. And by, you know, if we got ourselves together and got something going in January. Before next budget season, we could even have a recommendation so that if something needed was proposed. They could at least be incorporated into the thought process for the following year. Not saying it would be, but just that way you have a schedule that meets sort of the scheduling of of town activities and business.
Yeah, I think it's very important to have this committee determine what is going to be the primary use of that facility. Is it going to be, uh, you know, a ride and walk to? Is it going to have parking?
Right.
If so, how much?
Right.
Uh, crucial points, I think.
But at the same time, they don't have to figure out how do you do those things.
Right. Absolutely right. And what what are we going to provide?
Right.
Two picnic tables?
Yeah.
You know, whatever, right? And obviously, what to do about the buildings that are there? I think we all assume if we're going to take over the property, the buildings are going to go away, but.
I think.
No, they're not condemned. I would, I would ask if I could. And we can do this in a, in a different agenda item if we need to, but I'd like to get the camper that's been down there for a long time out there.
Can it be sold?
It might be able to, but it's not in the greatest condition, but it is an older one that looks in better condition and you see the rest storage.
They are selling them online for.
So I'd like to get that out there, but the other buildings are in in decent shape. We'll make sure they're secured as well as we can. And I don't know of anything that's hazardous, like a building that's about to fall down down there, so.
I do think the committee might have to think about the Tacoma Beach in the sense that. Uh, are we at the same time we're working with Johnston Drive? Are we going to do something with Tacoma Beach to make it safer? For vehicles from vehicular traffic?
I guess I'd like to see that be a separate discussion.
I would say we, I would say we separate these at this time. I mean, that's a. If we're going to just keep it and make it a safety thing, that's, that's a whole separate discussion outside of there. I would say let's have them focus on Johnson Beach, but when they're, or not the beach, Johnston Drive property, as they're doing that. They may have to talk about aspects of different parks. I mean, do we want to do this here? We have this park, this park, this park. But I don't think they should have a charge to look at all the different parts, but you know, there will be some conversation that pulls other ones in and. Or reasoning why they decide this is what they'd like to do over here.
I've got five things I wrote down that you guys have recharged so far. That's probably, like, you've got like keep versus sell. Future use recommendations, you know, how to access the walk, ride, parking. And then four was amenities that would be provided and five is what to do with the buildings. So I've got so far. Well, cost would be determined by.
Well, the cost will be with us whenever the use is.
Yeah, the cost determination will be made by the town based on their usage, so that would have, that assessment would have to go back to you to give to us along with our findings, right?
Yeah, and if they have some big recommendations, we can work on it at the same time.
Like if they were like building many Eiffel Tower, we're going to need a little more.
Yeah, and we may not know some of the costs because, you know, as we move forward with that, there's going to be different types of permitting and permissions from the state. That may come with fees, so it'll be research as we move forward, once we determine what we want to do with that.
Yeah, I think one thing you might want to add, just to make it more, even more specific, should we build anything or not?
Do we say what to do with the buildings or do we build?
Tear the buildings down, but then what?
Right.
Just leave it? I mean, there are many people who'd say, that's the way to go, just leave it. Some people say, oh, let's build a little something, then you get into more costs.
Right, and I know with Lakeside Park, many people were very interested in just leaving it. That's not what happened, but I think it's an optional conversation.
That's why we should have it.
Yeah, I think that would be part of the overall plan. Someone's got their hand raised online.
Uh. Who's that? Daniel? You have your hand raised?
He's gonna.
I do, I do.
Ah.
Hey, so would now, would now be the time to just mention a couple of concerns about the Johnson Drive Beach or?
I don't think so, really. I don't think this is designed to have that public discussion of the beach again, is it?
I mean, it's designed for the committee, so I think everybody noticed that way. Uh, I'd be willing to to take, you know, I mean, like individually, but I I don't know if we. Are being sure that a meeting notice that we.
Uh, I I think the time to express your concerns about Johnson Beach. Will be when the committee is established and they have public hearings and public meetings.
And you can volunteer to be on the committee, just saying.
Well, I'm in a butter, so I'm not sure that would be an option, uh, for you guys.
Uh, but certainly you can go to any meeting, uh. And it's just right now that we have to open up this whole public hearing type discussion once again.
I got you, I got you, but there's a lot of stuff being said that, you know, should you be checked out first? Like, I'm not sure you can even build. Down a road like that, so it's just, just my hands raised, raising left and right here, that's all. And I don't want to step on toes, I'm just listening.
And there are things that no one knows the answer to yet.
Right, right.
And we will find out.
Right.
Daniel, is that your legal name as an owner of a property?
No, so I'm on behalf of my mother, um, Tangway. So we have the red cabin down at the very end there. Um. And it's just, you know, I'll save my comments for another time, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, Lebanon. Lebanon has access to our parcel?
There's one.
Gotcha. Thank you. Sorry, I was trying to. Yeah, absolutely.
So if we have, yes, Mr. Kylie.
John, I guess if we're going to have that. If we're talking about next year, then CIP should probably move that out of twenty twenty-three and put it in twenty twenty-four. So I don't see any expenses happening if we're not talking about putting it until twenty, until, if we're talking about after town meeting. Even making any decisions. It'll be a part of next year's budget, so I guess we should put it in twenty twenty-four and get it out in twenty twenty-three.
Maybe depend how fast they make a decision.
Yeah, I mean, if they, six months takes us to. After town meeting.
If you're not, yeah, if you're talking, pointing in January.
Can I, I, it's.
You're out of the June.
How how big, honestly, like this started as a fifty thousand dollar proposal, which in the scheme of our overall budget is not a large amount of money. Um, it it's a large amount for those of us who have to earn a dollar for dollar, so I don't want to demean everybody's hard work. Um. But is it real, do we, do they need six months? I mean, six months is a significant portion of time compared to like, say, what we dedicated to the master plan.
I would say we give them six months. If they don't need that long, they don't take that long, but I think putting a timeframe on them, you don't want it to be.
Yeah, I think given the level of expectation for public engagement.
Sure.
I think six months would be needed, having been on the eighteen month.
Yeah.
Uh, open facilities group.
Truthfully, I'm bringing it up because I don't want this to be a discussion of twenty twenty-three town meeting.
Yeah.
On the CIP list.
Yeah.
Yep.
When we don't know what we're doing with it. I would just assume it was put on the twenty twenty.
Here, here's a question. Should we be splitting it in the sense that if it's determined that the building should be turned down? By this committee, should we have money set aside for that? Or can we do it out of operating funds if it's needed?
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to look at what it is. It's about.
I just, it, you know, that's something having.
It's in that thirteen to fifteen thousand dollar range at this point, which. Is a significant amount of money just to find somewhere, but, um. I also, like I said, there's, there's nothing out there that I would determine needs to happen right away.
Yeah, if there's not a safety or other concern, being patient is not necessarily.
I think our initial concern was vagrancy of you, right? And that was, and I know that the chief has been very diligent in going and checking. Um, and other folks, so if, i- into my knowledge, it's been okay.
Yeah, and we can, we can do a little more to secure them if we deem that there's an issue there.
Although, you know, on one, once you get rid of the buildings and do some grading and seeding. You have eighty percent of the park right there already.
I mean, even with the small footprint, it. You could, like, you could play a decent soccer game there, right?
Yeah.
If we decide to sell, we want to keep the footprint.
Yeah. This is true.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the Kylie principle.
So we. Listen, nobody, I didn't put mine out, but you know, you could put it out as an RFP for development. Now we're really in trouble.
Okay.
Um.
So we're good with seven people? Is that enough?
Five and the five and the two ex officio.
Who are the two ex officio?
Ed, Kevin.
Okay.
And Kevin can loop it, because Kevin works directly with the recreation commission, so I would add that, but those, he would have that conversation. Is that fair? Um, because you usually work directly with the rec, instead of trying to add more and more people from the same unit or no?
I think, I think the one we want to make sure we have is someone from the master planning group. Because they've asked many relevant questions and have collected a lot of data, so I think.
So what master planning and for?
But I do think that that's a group that, um, and then I mean, if it, if the decision is to make it a park and having. You know, the Parks Recreation Director leading the effort is, makes all the sense in the world.
Is one of the charges that we didn't, I know we discussed, but I don't remember is, is talking to stakeholders.
Definitely.
I'm just saying, we'll put it in the charge.
I mean, I think that's. The whole. Goal.
Sure, but if we don't put it in the charge.
Yeah.
I mean, I see it that way, but then, you know.
My question with that, as Daniel pointed out, would you guys want or be open to? A butters to the park being on that committee, or would you rather it be someone outside of that?
Residents of Lebanon?
No.
No.
Well, you can, I guess either way or.
I would say no, residents of Lebanon certainly.
And then what about a butter right around the park itself?
How do you pick one a butter? That's my question, right? Like, that's a super hard one. I mean, if you charge people with listening to them. It's a very different activity than saying you are the butter we're going to listen to. I guess the only way I would feel comfortable with butters is if you took the butter list and they voted for somebody and picked them themselves.
I I agree, I'm thinking, I'm I'm against the butters entirely. I think we need to listen to them. We need to take notes about what they say. We need to have that information available for us to discuss, but I do not believe they should be on the committee.
Yeah, I think, I I think this falls into the, it's a land use thing, right? Whenever a land use board sees something, the butters have to refuse themselves. And this is a town.
Okay.
Land use.
Yeah.
Activity and they always get, you know, special notifications about things, you know.
Absolutely.
They should receive that.
Yeah.
And I would just use our definition of a butter from them.
Yeah, that'd be my recommendation would be if there is zoning a butter, then.
Yeah.
Right, I think I have enough. I'll put something together and get it to the board for review there, one or before the next meeting.
Uh, next up, we have a discussion about strategic planning. Ed, you're leading this discussion.
I just wanted to to bring this up. As you guys know, during Brian's tenure before me, um, there was a lot of strategic government. Off, there was a lot of money spent during the strategic government process. I don't want to let that die. I mean, the town put a lot into that. Um, I also followed in the past a very, very similar process, the. Actually, the cover page in your packet is something that I had the department heads do, which is very similar, using a lot of the same information put together. So I was talking with Michael Akilian as we, as we moved forward, we were talking about doing a. Budget committee select board kind of retreat on the weekend to look at the. The strategic government, strategic planning, whatever you want to call it. And, you know, I thought it was really good that we take the data from the master planning discussions and we, we start to set some long-term goals. For the, for the community. I think even a little bit bigger above and beyond and I. Can't remember if I, oh, I did give you guys an example that I stole from another town on the, on the second page there and. That's really how I. Kind of see it going, that we can set this, this high level goal, the one that I used to, is, you know, we want to have a secure community. And then we start to define kind of what that is, and then I see the objectives and those smaller, shorter term goals to get there. Being more of an operational level issue where departments and myself can talk about what we can do to support the goals of the budget committee and the, and the select board. So I do want to have those discussions and we were talking about doing it this fall, but as I sit back and look. You know, we're, we're finishing up the master plan right now, so I think it's important that we get that in front of us before we move forward. I also think it's really important after next, last year's town meeting vote that we. Get the two new members of the select board, so we have a full select board buy-in as we do this retreat, but. I'd like to have that discussion. If we want to discuss a little now, directions you want to go, that would be fine, but, um. I guess I just didn't want to make this decision in the background. I wanted you guys to know what was going on, what my thought process was and. I would really like to lean towards maybe early next summer sometime or during next summer to really put a focus on. On setting those, you know, ten-year longer goals out in front of the community for us to build a framework behind them. So just wanted to, wanted to have that discussion. I did get an email from Michael Akilian last week saying, hey, where are we at? And it jogged my memory that we probably should have this discussion, so.
My favorite goal always starts with public safety. I mean, I think if you can't keep people safe. On holistic level, then you have no business doing any other business in your community, so. And encompasses so many pieces and it cuts across all of the silos in our town, so I think that's an easy goal and I, I. I feel pretty confident saying there aren't many people who wish that wouldn't be a good goal, but the other ones are going to be a little bit tougher.
Yeah, I like to work in that five to seven range, back to those numbers. I think if we have five to seven, pretty good. Ones, you know, safety is always one of them in every strategic plan I've seen. I've also seen a lot of talk around. Healthy communities or education-based communities. I mean, there's, there's a lot of things we could be talking about. And then if we stretch that box a little bit, you can really encompass almost every service we provide somehow and. I do like to go back to my department heads and. And I do like to go back to my department heads and ask them to find goals in every aspect of the strategic plan. And it's it's kind of fun to watch finance directors or librarians talking about how are they going to make our town more safe? But when they really start to put thought into it, they can find some goals that that help. And it's 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 a good process that people start to realize that they affect every aspect of this community and every position that we have. So with that, I'd like to just have a little discussion about your thoughts on that and how we want to go about that. Um. We could try to facilitate it ourselves. I think it may be a discussion that's better with an outside facilitator to tease out some of the maybe more controversial subjects, or when you get on those touchy subjects, it's good to have someone outside to feed those out and.
I I think when you have an outside person, you you're more encouraged to look deeply and beyond your own personal perceptions that you've always had and and look outside the box a little bit more. I'd be in favor of getting someone from the outside.
I feel like last time we set goals, I wasn't here to set the final ones because I have scheduling conflict, but I think a gentleman from Primax who might have been, was it Bristol? I feel like we had more than one role, maybe with someone who was a leader in Bristol, um, helped with those, and that was five. And then obviously, I was here when we worked with Mike, um, and I would be in favor of having someone outside do that and force us to think a little bit and ask some questions that, you know, we all have our own personal bias from working and living in town and, you know, asking us just like a little bit deeper and maybe with some questions that we wouldn't think of ourselves.
Yeah, I went through a great class of the another group outside that was facilitating a strategic planning thing for Primax and it was it was interesting the way that they they use their questions to to force you to dig deeper and past your own personal thought.
Yeah.
So I would agree. And so I will do a little bit of work coming through this budgeting process to to find out what something like that might cost in a couple of weekends or something. We'll look at possibly putting it in the budget.
Excellent. Thank you. Discussing the financing option for connection fees to the sewer system.
It's more meanings. Um. I was talking to Jim Taylor and as I put in your packet, we do have someone that's come to the to the town wanting to connect to the Forest Main along four A. Um. Putting our estimated fees together, looking at that, it looks like the the fee that he would have to pay or they would have to pay to connect to the system would be about eleven thousand dollars. Um, Jim was asking me if there was any way that we could spread those out into payments over either all of them or some of them into um, a multi year or some type, some way to spread it out a little bit. Um, per our policy, we don't have anything right now that gives me the authority to do that. Um, I did copy Claremont's ordinance into here. That's something that I've I've worked under. As I talked through it with Jim this last week. Everything kind of seems to fit. We agreed that the the ten thousand dollar limit was probably about right. We get much under that. I don't want to say all, but most people can probably find a way to afford that or figure that out. Plus, there's an administrative burden when we start to start to do this. So Jim agreed that the ten thousand dollar line in the sand, if you will, is probably approximately right. And he also liked the the three year timeframe. We don't want to spread it out too far, but um. Just giving giving a little bit of little bit of leeway to people that are trying to hook to our system and encourage people to look to our system. So wanted to bring this forward to the select board to talk about, see if it's something we'd want to do. If it is something we want to work on to get the proper wording for our ordinance, I did ask that we um, you make a motion to give me authority to work under what I've given you here as we move forward to go ahead and get this person moving forward on it.
I I would recommend changing one word. The last line of the italic, the city may charge interest. I would say the city will charge interest.
I think we can't use other taxpayers' dollars to finance somebody without some kind of financial benefit to cover some of the administrative costs. It doesn't have to be out of control like eighteen percent, but I think some kind of reasonable interest charge should be expected because then you get into the like, why not take the zero interest loan versus the, you know, that's like, hey, I could write one of those fund checks from my credit card company at zero percent, or I could get zero percent from the town. I I and if you, you know, it's like one of those things.
We say will charge.
Yeah, I like, um, would this be like a betterment, the betterment assessments we did, there'll be a lien or how are we gonna? Are we going to lean the property and charge it on on our tax bill?
We can work for, I mean, if they didn't, then, yeah, we would absolutely have to do that. That's about the only piece we would have to go after something.
Because I like it, register, put in the registry of deeds, I guess.
But the other thing that we have here is, I mean, we can we can't really turn sewer off, but we can turn water off if they look that way. So um, we can look at those those possibilities. Um, the one thing as we move forward at the wheel charge, um, and we could always come back to the select board, but we should think of some of these these bigger developments and stuff too, where it's it almost helps them be able to get over the hurdles and whatever that interest be may be, may be detrimental or not. I'm just thinking I I did it for a really big project. Some of those have connection fees upwards of forty thousand dollars and being able to spread that over a few years and get them past that building standpoint where they start getting some revenue coming in is often helpful. So.
Um. Couldn't some of these larger projects that potentially hunt us for some kind of tax break anyways with that or if I'm having.
They could talk to you about a seventy ninety or something.
Seventy ninety. So I'm just, I guess it's a tool in the toolbox, but also like, are we going to give them all the tools? And we can't bind a future board on this, but.
So you'd like the motion that we give you the authority to?
I I have one more question.
No.
So it's it's, yeah, that's okay. It's, you know, it says written agreement between the person and the city. We should probably change that to town.
If we will, that.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I know. It's country based, no problem. Um. But so if it's with the person, how does the what happens if they sell their property before three years is up? And the agreements with the person, the potential lien goes on the property. Who now has to be owner?
Yeah.
That was that was the question.
Most of the time, those are done that during the sale, it gets paid off.
Hmm. We, I I guess my, I guess my comment would be we probably want to make a requirement that it be paid. You know, similar like you have to pay off your mortgage if you sell the property. I think you probably want a similar statement in the agreements. Um, and the only other the only other comment I guess is, um, I know we're at the beginning of this, so you don't have a drafted written agreement. But it seems like we should have sort of a standard agreement available for people so that there's consistency across from person to person and not individual. First of all, nobody in town wants to be doing individual agreements. Um, but I think we need to have a standard agreement that is, this is this is your option.
That's exactly what Ed will be doing, I think.
Right.
Yeah.
So I wanted to have the conversation.
Joy's a thinner aviation.
Do we have a motion now?
I I will uh, move to authorize the town manager to establish a payment plan not to exceed three years with property owners currently applying to connect to the forest sewer main along Route four A in anticipation of a future policy change authorizing such actions.
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we will be working, just so you know, on a a partial plan.
And finally, under business, uh, surplus property. What is this camp on New Hampshire Route four A?
Is that the one that's buried in the woods and you can't get to unless you like walk through a stand of trees?
No.
It's the cabin that they came to us before about and then nothing, nothing got done. I think we changed leadership and they're just that kind of.
Yeah, that one was actually, I think there were minutes saying sell this or get rid of it as soon as possible and the transition happened. So that's that's in our wheelhouse to get rid of.
Beard property.
Beard property, yes. The two main ones I wanted to talk to the select board about tonight was the Methodist Hill property and the thirteen eighty seven New Hampshire Route four A, which is the burned down mobile home ones. Um. Those are two that we didn't have explicit permission to get rid of. The other two, the board has already made a motion to to get rid of. We have, and put it in the in the write up, but we have sent this to the planning board, zoning board, conservation commission and heritage commission to see if there's any big reason that comes back not to get rid of one of these. And then at that point, they would come back before the select board before our final determination.
You think the one that was the fire, the mobile home, that was waiting, we were supposed to be getting quotes on cleaning up the lots. That was the last discussion I remember having a chat. Because it was, is it, you know, is it okay to sell something that burned and is unsafe?
I can double check on that, but we do have people that want it as is right now.
Okay. They sign.
Well, let's just go for it.
No, I mean, if somebody really is feeling adventurous, make sure the lawyer, they cut their little finger as it locks down because finger disaster.
Little motion?
I'll make that motion to authorize the town manager to sell map zero two, lot twenty nine and map zero nine, lot twenty four. And hereby authorize the town manager or their designated to take such actions and execute all documents that may be necessary.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's it, except for administrative items. Uh, other business to come before the Board of Selectmen, public comments. We have public comments. Uh, Bob Kusick.
Hi, how you doing?
Hi there.
You know, um, I I don't want to beat a dead horse here because you already said that you're going to uh take time to review the possible restrictions on rentals. And I don't have a dog in this fight, even though I own three properties along the lake, I would I would never rent them. But I would like to stress that probably if I'm not mistaken, a fifth of our revenue in this town comes from taxes along the lake. Anything you do to diminish property values or anything this would do to diminish property values would have a direct impact on those values and you know, to be blunt, the revenue coming into the town. I do like, and I've looked at that, I do like and I think that certain limitations on occupancy are okay, as long as they're reasonable. And I think, you know, you you're on the right track here. I also think that limitations on parking and other things that relate to um, the neighbors that impact them are fine. Um, I do think that you should really think about what you're doing with the health and safety inspections. I know in Hanover, they have the fire department just doing inspections on the basis of, you know, their fire extinguishers or their smoke detectors. You know, are there exit ingress and egress from the um, bedroom? So I think that's good. I don't think you should have an inspection of properties relative to current building requirements because we know that probably sixty percent of the houses that were built pre, you know, building requirements in the state um, are not um, related properly to how the houses exist now. But I do think it's good to go ahead with this. Uh, we have three houses in our development that are rented and whenever there's a problem, we just contact the renters and they take care of the issues. So um, we're a small town. Believe it or not, we're a resort community, uh, and we have to approach things in the spirit of everybody working together. So I would just please um, have that in mind when you're going through this. That's it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I would say that was not the intent to have building enforcement inspections. It was more just what he said.
Right.
Yeah, if you have a fire extinguisher and smoke detectors, we're.
I think that was some of my question because it's hard in a small town where we wear so many hats. Um, because you're in there for one thing, but you wear another hat. It it just makes people uncomfortable. I'm not saying because of the person, it's just the nature of us wearing so many hats. So that was kind of why I asked who did what and why.
But you do want to make sure people aren't trying to do things like renting out the basement, for example.
I mean, listen, I've been in so many Airbnbs in my life where the basement has no egress and it has eight bunks in it.
Right.
It's a reasonable question. And you get in there and you're like, this is really a bad idea.
Yeah. So, yeah, and that's what we're trying to to work on really, the the things that really stick out at you. Uh.
David Bouset.
Bobby Bouset. And you unmute? Can't hear you yet.
I think you, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, um, thank you. Um, relative to the um, Johnson Lane um, properties, um, whether they become a beach or whether they become a park or however you it's dealt with by the by the community, um, I think that you may want to charge the committee with more than just listening to the embudders, but actively and positively engaging with the embudders. Because they've been been there a long time and I think they deserve um, and and their points of view deserve a lot of respect. Um, I am neither, um, and but I think that um, we don't want to see this tear the community apart either.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And I would say that we, there should be a lesson learned from Lakeside Park where the committee actively disrespected some of the neighbors, unfortunately. So I think it's it's a very hard thing to listen to people about their feelings, but it's very necessary. And that came around later in planning board hearings when we learned about some of the problems they had, which we discussed in the prior meeting, you know. So I I think I don't see us actively ignoring anybody.
Barbara Jones.
Yeah, yeah. Well, she wanted to, when she was feeling better, she felt bad that she'd been finishing, she wanted to do some more work.
Okay, um.
Uh, can I talk?
Yeah, yeah.
It's Barbara Jones.
Yes.
I wanted to um, say a couple of things that that sort of respond to to what you were saying earlier when you were, and and by the way, Dave, thank you for um, standing up for the butters. Um. The the buildings that exist now are in fact a a an eyesore. It's a, it's a kind of an entry port for for Enfield and to have that trashed. Um, Ricker's trailer there is not only dangerous.
Other humans. I don't think this was our thing. This is not ours and that's not okay.
Yeah, here's the thing. Uh, these comments are supposed to be other business. And now, but if if you can make it short, I think we would like to give you an opportunity to say something, but not at great length.
All right, I'm just saying that you put aside um, demolition of those buildings and I need to push back on that. I I think that they are being violated. People go down there, live there. And and it's a dangerous situation to put it off indefinitely, which is what I heard. I I think is a bad idea.
I don't think I would not use, I would not use the word indefinitely at all. I think the demolition of those buildings is all in likelihood to be one of the first things we do after we have established what we're going to do with the properties as a whole. And maybe even before. I don't know.
I would say, though, if you see somebody who is there, who has broken in through a lock, because as far as we know, that's not the case. So if you see like someone, okay, then you need to call the police. The number is six oh three, six four three.
Give me a break.
Two, 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 no.
I've already talked to the police about it, there has been someone in there, uh, and that, that's been taken care of, I'm just saying that they're empty buildings, ready to, ready to be, um, you know, violated.
Nobody on this board is, is gonna disagree with you on that point.
Right.
It's just a matter of the timeframe.
Yeah.
Guaranteed.
And I think if there is an active problem, you would let us know, right? Because that's
Make one an outhouse.
I'm, I'm not sure we want to touch the potential conservation and water issues on that one today.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
All right, I didn't see, I didn't see what you were tittering about, but I'll turn off my mic.
There was a joke about an outhouse, it wasn't about you.
It wasn't a joke.
Well.
That's a good thing to do one of the buildings. Why not?
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, everyone, appreciate you being here.
It's very unbecoming of the committee to threaten the butters with development.
Did you notice that they left us all by ourselves?
All right, we're having a meeting here, a committee meeting, this is, uh, Enfield.